Seven o'clock here, so if you could kindly take your seats. We will get started with the second part of tonight's forum. So folks, if you're interested in viewing the video from tonight's forum, you can expect to see it probably within three days on the LEAGUE's website. And again, I'll give you the URL for that. It was... It's www.lwvcla.org. All right, so let's go ahead and get started with panel two with the candidates for County Commissioner District Three. And we will be following the same format that we used in the previous panel. I remind you that a brief description of the responsibilities of the office are on your agenda. The candidates are incumbent Bill Peach and the challenger Mike Dougherty. Both candidates, in the order they filed for office, will be given up to two minutes for their opening remarks. We have asked the candidates to introduce themselves by covering the following information. One, what are your qualifications for serving as county commissioner? Two, why are you running for this office? And tell us what your goals are for the first year of this term of office. And we will begin with Bill Peach.
Thanks very much. When you said three days, I thought, wow, is this going to be a long debate. But I want to share with you that first, I'm very proud to serve as your county commissioner. I thank very much the LEAGUE Women Voters for organizing this and Peninsula College. Actually, LEAGUE puts on a very, very organized event today, and I appreciate that. My qualifications are that I came from a very small town in Montana, smaller than Forks. I came here to Forks after college in '83, and I've had the opportunity to serve you as your county commissioner for the last four years, where I've learned an awful lot about the concepts of collaboration and openness. And so my goals are to continue that process. I'll share with you one thing that I'm very proud of is the endorsement of the union at all of the county workers. It tells me that some of the things that this current commission is working on actually are appreciated. And those things include the ability to understand clearly what is occurring and to engage. Actually, we're also very involved in trying to develop people as a way to tell people we thank you and to give them opportunities for promotion in the future. I'm going to be pretty straightforward with you in all of the questions that you give to me. I hope they're nice and difficult because I will give you a straight answer to it. I just got back from Washington, D.C., spent a few days there, and I've got to tell you, it's very nice to be home.
Thank you. Mr. Dougherty?
Also, thanks to LEAGUE, the college. I'd like to introduce my wife in the back, Paula. We raised three sons. They're Irish Hooligans now, they're reformed, have responsible jobs, and we're grateful to the community for doing that, for helping us. There are two little handouts I had, they're on the back, I think. There's a little green card that talks about the website, welcome to send in comments off that website, and then there's a little handout. And this basically summarizes some of the reasons why I'm running. I was much more active commissioner, not only in the county, with West End Wednesdays, when I'd cover all the communities and the counties, three reservations. Very active on issues, many times stayed into the evening and a lot of different stops at the two community advisory councils operating much more robustly than they have been. This also summarizes a little bit about financial concerns, and it summarizes some of the things we did without having any debt service. We built the reserve that this board currently tends to thank us for. And then on the back, it summarizes some areas where I provided leadership and people trusted my leadership many times over a decade on areas where five, seven counties were collaborating together. And at the bottom, there's an area where there were five instances where governors or the Association of Counties appointed me to represent their interests on statewide committees and at the legislature. Qualifications, I was the chairman of the Board of Freeholders, I was a commissioner in the '70s in term, and then later served four more terms. I served on a school board, and I was very active in timber counties, coastal counties, a number of subgroups within the Association of Counties. I'm running to work in some areas I hope you ask questions on: affordable housing, some of the issues regarding drugs, opioids, things. That was a big issue for me, representing all the counties in the state at the legislature. First-year goals involve many of those questions that I hope will come up: housing, drug treatment, those types of things. So, bottom line, I'd be a much more active commissioner.
Thank you very much. All right, so now we will take as many questions as possible from you, the audience. We will follow the same procedures as with our previous panel. Please come to the microphone, state your name, and specify whom your question is for. You will have up to 30 seconds to ask your question. The candidates will be given up to one minute to answer each question. Both candidates will have an opportunity to respond to all questions, even those directed to a specific candidate. I will then give both candidates the opportunity to respond to or rebut their fellow candidate's answers. They will be given up to 30 seconds for a brief response or rebuttal, or if they wish, they may waive their chance to respond. And I hope that we will be able to hear all your questions. Please keep in mind that we will give everyone in the audience the chance to ask a question before taking follow-ups or multiple questions from the same person. And so, as you are coming to the mic, I will kick off this part of the forum with the first question, and this is for both candidates. And since Mr. Peach went first, we'll have Mr. Dougherty answer the first question, and that is, what course of action should a rural county take to increase job opportunities?
Big spectrum for an answer. One, always support education, bring in some new programs. I was very active in creating the incubator, Clallam Incubator, and the North Olympic Peninsula Skill Center. Both those programs are gone. Bill was chairman of the incubator when it went under. I was one vote against closing it. I thought we could have saved it with more cooperation, school superintendents primarily. And then the skill center, I testified twice in front of the Lords trying to save that. This board didn't take positions on that. When you lose those, you don't get those back. So, education, and then opportunities for jobs. Some of that involves working with timber industries. I don't know that Bill was active at all in the U.S. Bioenergy Company coming out here from Montana, investors. I was the one principally who brought them out here. Working with the mill in Port Angeles with a generator, I lobbied the legislature four different sessions to get some energy grants and to move that generator ahead. I was very active in a group called Timber Counties.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, Mr. Peach, same question.
I'm actually elected by all 22 counties to serve on a position for you, Department of Natural Resources. That's a position that I cherish and gives me the opportunity to share the message that the DNR is withholding money that is due to your library, to your hospital, and I'm working really hard to get that money forward.
Okay, Mr. Dougherty, you have 30 seconds for rebuttal.
So that's one source of money, but in my career, I worked in the United States Senate, I worked in the state legislature, I've worked in a number of local government positions, I've worked for the city of Port Angeles and the county in two different forums where they hired me to do some work. So I think I know government, I helped design the charter, and then as a commissioner, implement the whole rule of charter. So I think I have good experience. And as far as the timber issue alone, there's a lot more than that, but I was far more active in this group called the Timber Counties. And I would rather work with 21 timber counties than just be working on my own. You'll get more mileage working together.
Thank you. And while you formulate your questions, I have one more that I will ask, and remind you that if you need a... Oh, I'm sorry.
Just real quick.
Mr. Peach has 30 seconds for rebuttal.
I understand the difference between making payroll and learning about it. And the difference is actually working hard for a living in any kind of role that you have, and I'm sorry, a job in the government doesn't give you that kind of background. I understand it very well, and I support being able to continue your business, like oppose regulation that inhibits your ability.
Okay, thank you. So before we do move to the next question, let me remind you that if you need a card to write your question out on, just raise your hand, and one of the representatives will bring one to you. Okay, so the next question then, and this time, Mr. Peach gets to answer first, and that is, how would you support investment in alternative energy, including wind, solar power, and electric vehicles to contribute to reduction of carbon emissions and build resiliency for our infrastructure?
I studied the issue of the utilization of electricity in vehicles. As I'm on the board for Clallam Transit, let me tell you that in a community with a lot of people, it's a great vehicle, as in terms, a great method to transport people with lower carbon emissions. It is not a good tool for a rural community with large distances, and actually before an investment is made. Please take a look at the total cost of that decision, although it's fairly sexy, if you will. It has its time and its place, and it's not ready, that technology is not ready for application in this county.
Mr. Dougherty?
Well, it's ready and it's being done. Bill in another forum said that electric vehicles were not commercially viable yet. You should talk to Governor Brown, there are 383,000 vehicles, electric vehicles, in California, there are about 36,000 in Washington. And I've worked with some retirees from Forks, or from Port Townsend, to try to build with private enterprise Olympic Loop EV charging network. As you know, BMW put some money, six chargers, seven chargers around the park, the Volkswagen settlement will soon come out, and we could finish the loop. As far as alternative energy, I was on a statewide committee that looked at alternative energy two different times, so I'm very aware of that. I've been in four statewide climate action or climate study committees, governor or state association of county appointments, so I'm very familiar with that. When Ron Richards, Commissioner Richards, and I were on the Board of Commissioners, we put solar preheating water on the front of the courthouse, paid itself off about three and a half years. The second generation now is even more efficient.
Thank you. And rebuttal, Mr. Peach.
400,000 vehicles have been recalled, Prius just manufactured. The reason is that the combination of electricity and gasoline is the technology that needs to be refined. The problem is, the vehicle stops. I've got one of those. It stops, and then it runs on electricity until you press the accelerator and the engine for gasoline kicks in. Guess what happens when it doesn't kick in and you're in an intersection? This is a big problem. It's a small segment of the market that needs to overcome those kind of technological issues.
Thank you. Mr. Dougherty, rebuttal?
Long overcome that. The challenge is batteries now, whether they have fast chargers, level two or level one chargers. It's old news what Bill's talking about. We have a Prius, they warned us the battery might go out in three or four years, and it would be on $10,000 expense. But Prius is still going strong, and it's, what, 12, 13 years old? No problem with batteries. So they've proven themselves. Sadly, the Japanese understood this much before we did. So we lost getting in the early market, and we're losing it now when political leaders don't take a step and start electrifying the transportation fleet.
Thank you. Okay, let's see, do we have any questions from the audience?
My name is Sherry Schaff, and my question is for both. I'm interested in your views about climate change and how you see its effect on Clallam County, particularly with regards to fire, water, and resource issues.
Thank you, Sherry. And Mr. Dougherty, you are first to answer.
So again, I served because of either gubernatorial appointments or the Association of Counties asking me to represent all counties, including rural, urban, to study climate change. And I did that at least a year on each appointment, sometimes they were two years. So I understand it very well. My wife and I are going down to visit grandkids, have driven through the Tubbs Fire, the Thomas Fire in California. We understand seeing on sight the biggest fires in California, and as the globe warms, we're going to face that up here. I'm old enough, I remember the Forks Fire. My father was prosecutor, he brought me out here, the sheets of embers flying overhead, and he and a state patrolman named Boyd Rube trying to decide which parts of Forks they would save and which they would sacrifice. Now, there is a study, and it's in the file of the county commissioners. It was funded by part of a grant that I headed. I was the principal investigator on a NASA project, and we had $35,000 left after the grant was over. So we funded this study, and it explains wildfire risks. And the bottom line is, the consultant says Clallam County is the fifth most highest risk for catastrophic loss due to wildfire. So it's something we should do a lot more to prevent and get ready to respond.
Thank you. And Mr. Peach?
I manage 200,000 acres here on the peninsula, and I've got to tell you that fighting fire is dangerous. The things that help you the most are your background, your training, and the ability to communicate. And here's the issue that I share with you. Take a look at those resources today versus where they were 20 years ago. They have decreased substantially. So is the experience of people that deal with that issue. So I do believe that there's a change in our climate. I do not believe that this is man-made, I'm real clear about that. The things that we need to do, focus on the issue of resilience. We need to improve our communication system so that when a fire breaks out, we can respond quickly. Think about it. 583,000 acres out of 1.2 million acres of DNR-managed land is to manage other than timber production. What good is that for those species when it burns them?
Okay, 30 seconds for rebuttal, Mr. Dougherty.
So Bill primarily talked about ability to communicate. The community is lucky, we had an opportunity to get a grant, and at the end of two rounds, we were ahead, and then we lost the third. I personally made an appeal to Governor Locke. I went down the evening that we heard we were going to lose that grant. I talked to the governor, the next day he reversed it, and we got $6 million to build up the interoperable communications loop around the peninsula. So those kinds of connections pay off. Now it's a little bit of an older system, and we should upgrade it. There are dead spots. Some of you remember the tragedy of Chris Fairbanks that should have been prevented, and I'd work on a module to increase interoperable communication.
Rebuttal?
Just a couple of quick comments. Mike and I are both past associated with the Washington Association of Counties. He applied for the position that I had on Department of Natural Resources. I was elected to that position, okay? Think about that for a second. I also want you to understand that this process of securing grants, that occurs because you have motivated leaders in your departments. And although some people would like to take credit for other people's work, the people that should be commended are the leaders of the departments that applied for that grant.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lissy Andrews, Forks, Washington. And we all know that the commissioner's time is very valuable, and so this question's for Mike. Bill is a very big part of our community here. He's a Forks Lions club member, he's at the scholarship auction, and he's here quite a bit for being the county commissioner. And he is an at-large member of our chamber board, and he's the vice president of West End Business. As county commissioner, what kind of commitment are you going to make to our community, or how involved will you be in our community? For example, the chamber and West End Business.
Mike?
So same commitment I made years ago, and the West End Wednesday routine served me very well. So I tried to be out to the West End Business group by eight o'clock. I'd go down to La Push, I'd be back to the chamber meeting by noon. I'd head over the hill to Nia Bay. Clallam Bay CQ people knew I'd be there late afternoon into the evening, and Joyce folks knew I'd be there in the evening. Sometimes I'd go repeat month if I had a call to look at a road, look at a culver, talk to somebody at Lake Crescent or Lake Sutherland. So they were long days, but it connected people within the third district. And they knew their county commissioner represented the whole third district, not primarily Port Angeles to Forks and Sappo, and back and forth. So they knew me very well, I got along very well with the three tribal councils, chairman, Grange meetings. On this side, I came to scholarship auctions. I try to have the same level of involvement, maybe more, because now my wife is also retired, and she enjoys traveling out here. I actually enjoy all the people of the West End, Native American to senior citizens to historic figures. One night, I was at the funeral for Pete on the weekend. I enjoy this. I'm a kind of history nut, so I enjoy coming out here, being part of the history, and I'll keep up at least what I did in the past by being out Wednesdays and on weekends when somebody calls.
Thank you. And Bill?
This is a trick question for Mike. What time does West End Business start?
Starts at 7:30, and Don Gristrom used to kid me because I wouldn't get there until about eight. But if I'm at Nia Bay at a naming ceremony at 11 o'clock at night, sometimes I would do that. So I would try to be there by eight because they were done with their business.
Since my name was raised, can I say something?
Do you have a question? Come on over.
Thank you very much. So you're right, Mike. I was the president of West End Business Professional Association, and I believe the minutes would reflect that you routinely came at 10 after or quarter after eight. And when I was the president, I asked you, Mike, how come you don't come to the meeting when you know it starts at 7:30? And your exact statement to me was, I want you to have an opportunity to discuss local issues.
Do you have a question, Don?
Okay, the question is, aren't you, as a county commissioner, supposed to be concerned with local issues, or is your only agenda to come out to the West End to tell us what you think we should know? Thank you.
Well, I think I'm a good listener, and I listened to Chamber, listened to West End Business, but to get across the whole district, you're right, I typically didn't get there until around eight. But some of the members mentioned to me that they handled some of the in-house business early on, and then I'm there, and I always lingered afterwards. Usually I didn't have a time until 10 down at La Push, for my connections there, to listen. So I'd have the same routine. If somebody wants me to adjust the routine a bit, I'd be glad to do it. And usually, very often, I'd say Saturdays or Sundays I would be out here because somebody who was working daytime, it didn't fit the West End Business or the Forks Chamber, but I'd be back out. And again, I think my wife would be sympathetic with traveling out here, more together than I did alone.
Okay, Bill, same question.
So I just want you to take a look at the difference in the management styles between Mike and I. My style is to listen to you and collaborate to find a solution. One of the things that Mike has conditioned his management style is that he tells you what he believes. I don't fault him for having an opinion, but I want you to know that that approach alienates people and it blocks communication.
Okay, and Mr. Dougherty, rebuttal?
Well, I think my record can speak for itself. If you look at Bill's, when Bill discusses collaboration, he has one or two examples. If you look on the back of this little handout, you'll see the Resource Advisory Committee, seven counties were fighting over money. And those commissioners from the seven counties elected me 12 years in a row because of collaborative listening style and handling the money, so it wasn't a food fight over that federal money. A thing called the RC&amp;D, now it's called the North Olympic Development Council, best collaborative forum between Clallam and Jefferson. Every tribe, the mayors, the PUDs, the ports, the cities come to that once a month, and I headed that for a decade. So I think my record is being collaborative and listening.
Rebuttal, Mr. Peach?
I also sit on the Resource Advisory Committee, and one of the conversations I had when I was in Washington, D.C., was our newly appointed head of the Forest Service, West Forest Service, and shared my interest in what we're doing with the Resource Advisory Committee. Let me tell you something else about the RC&amp;D. Take a hard look at the amount of revenue from that particular organization that came to the West End, west of the LW. Okay?
Okay, thank you. We have another audience question.
My turn. County Bovet, District Three, Port Commissioner. We need steady, reliable dollars to go to our junior taxing districts from DNR, not the wild fluctuations we have seen in previous years. What would you do to ensure a more even flow of revenue from timber receipts to the county and the junior taxing districts?
Thank you. And let's see, Mike, you went first on the last one, so Mr. Peach, this is yours.
One of the things that we are currently doing is we are providing information to all of the junior taxing districts based on a forecast that DNR prepares for us. The expectation of that revenue stream then drives, first off, the budgeting process for that junior taxing district, but it also creates awareness when that revenue does not show up. That is something that is a genuine change in the management of the revenue stream from the DNR that has, this time is the first time that it has occurred. And I'll tell you that there are issues that we are working on to try to convince the DNR that they are, they have a fiduciary responsibility, and we are asking for something that's very basic. Tell us the revenue so that we can plan a court in line.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dougherty, same question.
So again, it's a little difference of style. So I was very active in the Timber County group, 21 counties working together. Now, only 14 or 15 actually have enough timber that they take it seriously, but I was one writing letters, writing resolutions, setting up meetings with the governor, with the head of the public commissioner, Public Lands, regularly. And I think I did far more than my share, but it was working with those counties. Now, Bill tends to work a lot by himself. If you look at the record, the most important decision made during his term was the Marbleton Roulette Strategy. And that was discussed here in town the other night with staff of DNR. I don't know where Bill was, he wasn't there. But on the main vote, it was what, five to one, six to one? It's bad, you're not bringing trust to the forum when you lose on a vote, and you're the lone vote. I would have worked with the Timber Counties, all those who have an interest in the same predictable receipt system that Bill talks about, and I share a lot of his concerns. So do the others on the Timber Counties. So I would work with the group.
Thank you. Rebuttal?
I wasn't that convenient because I talked to the regional manager about what would be presented, and guess what? She didn't know. I knew because that was a presentation from headquarters. I was on a plane to Washington, D.C., where I did talk to two individuals from the Department of Interior. And the question that I asked them was, can you help me with my ethical issue? I understand a fiduciary responsibility, I understand plants with a law. I voted against the proposal that was on the table because it exceeded my fiduciary responsibility. In other words, I violated the fiduciary responsibility if I accepted the proposal.
And rebuttal?
Well, I understand that situation. In fact, I took a course similar to that at Georgetown, and it's tough. But when you have an Endangered Species Act liability, you better work with the government in solving it. Now, you can go to court, sometimes Calama County, some others have gone to court, and maybe the timber industry is shut down in the U.S. forests for five years, 10 years because of serious issues. So you've got to balance that. We happen to have a son, our older son, who works in these areas, working in 13 states right now with governors, chief of staffs, and others, working to save the sage grouse, a little chicken bird. So I understand the issue, and I'm pretty up to date on how to negotiate those.
Thank you. And Ms. Reed, do you have a question?
I do, thank you. Neidra Reed. Commissioner Dougherty, when you were out here as our commissioner, and the city of Forks was in litigation with the Department of Natural Resources over sustained harvest calculation and operation of the DNR, why didn't you support us? And if you didn't, and I know you didn't then because I was the mayor, so how do you feel that you could support this community now when, quite frankly, you weren't there for us?
Well, I'd just say, Neidra, you weren't in the meetings down in Olympia with the Timber Counties, number one. You weren't in the meetings with the Commissioner of Public Lands.
I was there when you sat on her side of the table, Mike, and you chastised me for that upstart mayor of the West End who didn't understand Belcher's point of view. that upstart mayor of the West End who didn't understand Belcher's point of view. I'm sorry, point of order.
Well, neither of that, I don't remember that meeting. So I don't recall anything like that happening. So I would have been supportive. If you look at the history of the RCND, for instance, I've been supported cities, counties, ports, in the most collaborative forum in the two counties. And those elected officials elected me to be their chair for a decade. So I think I can work and understand all sides and listen. So I think the record's pretty clear.
Okay. Mr. Peach?
I'm very involved in what is being proposed for the Marquette. Did you know that Clallam Bay will be very, very significantly impacted by what is proposed as additional protection in that area? It will have a dramatic impact on their school. Their fire department didn't even have enough money to put out a fire recently that burned down one of the teachers' houses. Okay? So I'm very interested. They needed a trash pump and they don't have one. Think about that one for a minute. I'm very involved in trying to share with every single member of this county and all other counties what the financial implication is of what's being proposed. One of the things that I did when I was in DC was share the fact there was no financial analysis of what is currently being proposed. There will be one on the 19th of this month, hopefully, two weeks before the end of the 90-day comment period. A request for an extension of that timeframe has taken place.
Thank you. Raballo, Mr. Doherty?
Well, yeah, I support what Bill is asking for. I think I would have tried a little different technique and get members of the main 14, 15 counties that are interested in the Timber Counties to work with me to get that information forwarded. And it would seem logical, especially if you know congressional delegation members, House members, the House and Senate delegation from our legislative district, they would be supportive together going to get that information before you even go on the road with the open house they had down at the Rainforest Center the other night. So I think collaboration with Congress, state representatives, senators pays off when you can work together with them. And if you remember, Theron, George Chapman, and I worked together well for a dozen years.
Relationships make all the difference. The people that are in the state legislature and the federal legislature change. The relationships that you develop depends on your interpersonal communication skills. I can tell you for a fact, when you walk into a legislator's office and tell them you've just stopped your communication. That's the style that my opponent works with. And he thinks that will be effective, developing and maintaining new relationships. There's always new relationships in government.
And we have time for one more question before we take questions from the media.
So Ed Bowen again. And my question is because I have what I consider two incumbents running for the position. So I'm looking for something new in this next term. So here's my run-on Senate's question. Do you think it is fair to the county to take $300,000 out of a trust land harvest generating revenues to the county and to the junior taxing districts to replace a bridge on US Forest Service lands and to be able to access those, that timber harvest, whereas the US Forest Service is not contributing anything to that bridge replacement that they lost in 1997?
Okay, thank you. And let's see, Bill, you're first on this one.
Just to help you on that, Mike, this is to do with the water just briefly, Port Angeles, and to access their water, a bridge is necessary? No, it's not fair. And here's what's going to occur because a commitment was made to the people by the Forest Service that that bridge would be maintained, and it didn't. It pulled it. Now for a timber sale to occur, $300,000 where the bridge needs to take place. And here's how it will be painful. The revenue that should go to the junior taxing districts for that bridge will not go to those junior taxing districts. That's not fair. It really is not fair.
Is it federal forest?
It's on the way. It's Forest Service?
Okay. So again, if one has a relationship with your congressman, your two US senators, that would help solve this problem. A commissioner talking to the US Forest Service is not as affected as having a senior senator, Patty Murray. And I used to be on her legacy committee, deciding what things in her career would be remembered in history. So, you know, I have a rapport with Kilmer. His father and I were high school classmates. I watched his three brothers being raised in Port Angeles, so that pays off. When the El Wauk Bridge was a big issue, talking about bridges, the biggest project in the history of Clallam County Road Department, it was a $20 million project. And we had four or five types of grants and funding cobbled together, but we were $2 million short. So I set up a meeting down in Olympia, thanks to Lynn Kessler calling in from an airport in Chicago. We were able to lobby in Olympia to get DOT, and I used to introduce her as Dr. No, the Assistant Secretary. But at the end of a couple hours of meetings, she bought our case and the DOT contributed. So there are ways to collaborate with the federal delegation, state legislators, departments to get money for these kind of projects.
Thank you. And Mr. Peach?
I worked with both Representative Theronger and representative, or other representative that we all know who came from this county. I served with him, all right? Commissioner Chapman, Representative Chapman. I know both of those people, and I have the ability to speak to both of those people regardless of the party. That's what I appreciate, the same as to with Congressman Kilmer. He called me a couple of days before he endorsed Mike and said he was going to. And I said, I appreciate your style. I really do appreciate the courtesy.
Thank you. And Mr. Doherty, Raballo?
So again, some of this is building up rapport with senators. And our senators know I worked for US Senator Magnuson, senior senator, so I kind of know how the Senate works. I wrote amendments for appropriation bills. So when I sent an amendment, Patty Murray to amend the bill by Senators Bingaman and Craig a few years ago to create a natural resource restoration center out here at Snyder or in combination with the Natural Resource Center on the Hill, she got the bill amended and inserted. So if you know the process and you know the players, I think you can be more effective to do things like putting up a natural resource training center.
Thank you. All right. So now I would like to take a moment to see if, do you have one more? Okay.
Mr. Peach, this is for you. You accuse Mr. Doherty, and this is not from me, this is from someone else. You accuse Mr. Doherty of being an elitist and wanting to take care of the unwashed. Can you offer any evidence of Mr. Doherty being an elitist? And who are the unwashed that Mike wants to take care of?
Mike told me that person now. That's how I got the information. I'm sincere, and I was shocked, but I wanted to watch what that really meant. And here's what I learned, that he has a view that each one of the people in this room need to be told. And I don't agree with that approach. I believe that, just as I went to Washington, DC and approached, I had a chance to talk with the Vice President of the United States. Everybody has the opportunity to communicate, all right? And I honestly believe that telling somebody is not communication.
Well, someone like me, I don't remember this conversation where I have said this. And typically, that's not my nature. And I can introduce you to 10 friends and they, in fact, one neighbor, when he saw, read that in the paper, he'd say, who is that guy talking about? So I disclaim any interest or having said that. And I think if you look at my record, it's far different. And I think the tribes, the communities across the third district would say I listened. I'd stay into the evening in most cases, sometimes on the fork side, sometimes Clallam Bay CQ, many late nights at tribal events because I was a listener. I wasn't just telling them what to do. I was learning. And it was probably the greatest experience of my life to meet all the different political philosophies in the West End. People in the various tribes, which as you know are different, the Nudka Nuchalma versus coastal Salish. It was a great learning experience. And I, that's part of the reason I'd like to come out of retirement and do it again. I think I'd do a good job.
Raballo?
I'll just share with you that I do have also the ability to communicate effectively with the Native American community. I was the executive director for the Kewee Tribe and have a very good rapport with all of the tribes because I show respect. You can listen all you want, but if you don't show respect, you won't maintain a rapport. Not only is that true for the tribes, it's true for the community. That's the difference in our management styles.
Raballo?
Well, I think it's fair as a bill was let go by Quillian. I've been given honorary names, all sorts of gifts by the tribes, so I get along very well, partially because in their culture, you trade on generations of trust. My father got along very well. Did a lot of free law work for tribal members. If you remember the 50s, 60s, very little discretionary income with the tribes. We ate a lot of fish, halibut, shellfish in lieu of legal fees when we were kids. In fact, one night, my mother and father, a few times I heard them arguing. My mother told my father, you know, it's school time, the kids need some school shoes. My father said, well, we'll try to work something out. My mother, my mother told my father, your kids can't wear salmon on their feet to school.
Thank you. No, that was, I think we got both of you. Does she have any more? Any questions from the media then? Ken, did you have any? You're not sure? Okay. You want to think about it for a moment? Mr. Ken?
I submitted two cards earlier. Evidently, you didn't get them. The gallon of blue.
Well, let me go without the cards. I think most people in this room have probably received the current voter's pamphlet put
out by the Secretary of State. One of the key issues addressed in that pamphlet is I-1631 carbon tax initiative upcoming. One of the key elements in that plan will affect all of us in this room. If passed, your gas prices are going to go up and your electric rates are going to go up. And that's found on page nine of that pamphlet. And I'd like to know, as a constituent, what are your positions on I-1631?
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Doherty, you're first.
So I've stated a number of forums based on the same question. I intend to vote for that initiative. And again, I spent literally years now on these four statewide climate change advisory committees. Scientists all across the board came into those committees, experts in various areas of state government, because these had to do with state government impacts on Washington State. And so state agencies counseled us on their best advice for best available science, what the impacts would be. They're misnomers. It's not a tax, it's a fee. And the wealthiest corporations in the history of the world don't have to pass that tax or that fee down. They could absorb some of that. They are investing in renewables themselves. So the governor would like to lead this if this passes so that we invest in renewables, solar, wind, things that are not going to cost us a lot. So over the longer haul, if you think of investing for our kids and their kids' future, it's time we do something about climate change. And if you're, you want to look at this study, you're welcome to read it.
Mr. Peach, same question.
I'm privileged to live in an area that we enjoy clean air and green water. And I hope everybody continues to have that, especially people that live in a big city. But I'm very sad that we see a regulation that will have tax to the working person and not to corporations for one reason, a governor that wants to run for president. That is very sad, that that individual has the audacity to step on the common people just to be recognized as a candidate to run for the presidency. This was shot down two years ago, and it still is coming forward despite what the people have said. I think a better approach is let's take a look at what the forests do in terms of carbon capture. There's tremendous opportunity, and we here on the Olympic Peninsula do more than many to help with regard to carbon capture.
And Raballo?
If you read Bill Gates' statement the other day, he, along with billionaires across the world, are now investing in Energy Venture, a new corporation. They know humanity is at risk. We have to do something. And I don't want to hold our little grandson and granddaughter or somebody and say, I did nothing. This is the best chance we have to do something. And if it's wrong, the legislature can do that. Now, two speakers are referred to it as a tax. It's not a tax. Read it. I don't know if you've read the initiative. It's a fee, and it's, if you know the pro-campagne material, they explain what a fee is, not a tax.
Okay, Mr. Peach, Raballo?
I just finished a conversation before I joined this meeting to deal with septic systems. A fee, $13 a person per year with no ceiling, was the topic of the conversation. And I posed it very vehemently. I do support the notion that we should take staff that work, professionals that work for the county and look at continuity. You know why those people actually have agreed if the grant that they are currently, that currently provides money for their wages dries up, do they have a more job?
Thank you. And did you have another one, Mr. Ken?
Yes, I did. Following the last West End Commissioner candidate forum, I had the opportunity to spend some time with Mike Doherty. I used to be on the county park board for a number of years, and he was the commissioner liaison and oversaw that committee. Anyhow, the topic at hand, as you may guess, was climate change. And I asked Mr. Doherty if he had had an opportunity to read Mark Moreno's book on climate change, and he said that he had not. But he made a commitment to read the book. And my question for Mr. Doherty is, have you read the book?
Short answer is no, but I went on the internet, looked at reviews of that book and the second title that you mentioned to me. And they were not reviewed as being high quality. Now, I've read Jim Hansen's books, his journal articles, and he's the scientist in 1968, was the head of Goddard Space Center later, that projected these impacts. And he mentioned he was probably conservative. Now, he tells us he was really conservative. So these are impact. You had water shortages out here this summer. You have wildfire risk. You're going to have some more public health issues when there are big wildfires. So the world's changing, and we've got to bend the curve on climate change, greenhouse gases, so we can cool the earth a bit and then get on with a normal life. Do you think these hurricanes, flooding, wildfires are normal? It's a sad future that we're leaving behind, and we have to do something. This is one time we can do it on this initiative.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Peach, same question.
There's a book I read that dealt with climate change, and it had a letter that was written by the President of the United States at the time to the current president. And it dealt with climate change and stated, we are currently experiencing this and it's causing tremendous turmoil, and we recommend that all future presidents consider the fact that as you address this issue, you do not address any violation of the Declaration of Independence or your Bill of Rights, especially private property rights. It's about the second president of the United States, and what they were referring to was freezing, climate change, freezing of the rivers. That was a big deal in the day. It prevented commerce. Here's my point. There will be change. How we manage change is going to be the difference between this generation and future generations. We don't have the right to deprive the future of their rights.
And Raballo?
Well, doing nothing is depriving their rights. You just read the newspaper, news account. You don't have to drive through the Tubbs Fire. You can see the change, and it's happening, and we have to address it. The best available science is very clear. There are some things we can do, and I think we have to get on with it. Investing in new, clean energy jobs, a lot of conservation of energy projects, that's what will happen if this clears. Now, today was the best forum, they said, in the state at the Port Angeles Business Association. Bill Peach wasn't there. Now, I've been to many of those forums. On the four statewide committees, I read the book that I suggested to him, Naomi Klein's book.
Mine was, there were people that were reinforcing his thoughts, that he has the ability to tell you what to do. I disagree with that approach. I disagree with the notion that the science is... I disagree with the notion that the science is settled. For every argument you want to put on one side, I'll show you an argument on the other side. How we resolve this depends on how much we are willing to commit ourselves to the basics of the United States Constitution and rights.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Grost.
Mike, you brought up housing issues and being a real estate broker, I'm pretty familiar with that. But you've also talked about grants. I think a lot of times, one of the housing issues that's most addressed is for low-income people. But I'm going to tell you, my experience in the business is that teachers and hospital workers need houses too. And sometimes when you go out there and get a grant for something, like was recently done from USDA grant, you're forced to allow people to come here and take advantage of that funding that was provided and that has consequences on the community.
Your question.
What is your view on grants for low-income housing? How's that?
So I've actually presented a plan to the Port Angeles Planning Commission, the PABA's Government Affairs Committee. If you look at the west side of Port Angeles, my example, and look in Forks, there are a lot of houses that have either been abandoned, they've gone through foreclosure, some other ways that houses being abandoned. And within a short time, mildew, when the power is turned off, mildew gets into the wall, very difficult to turn those houses around. I've talked to some bankers, they don't like to hold depreciating assets on their books. They would like to see those used. And we had a program called Future Builders. It ended because of the recession, but you could create a program like that. And I've talked to the main teacher, a good friend of mine, Dave Peterman. There, I've talked to some younger contractors, I've talked to some people who flip houses. They would like to see a program where we have the utility keep the power on. We get those houses turned around and put into a situation if they're on foundations, get them secure and get them ready for resale. And then build in an opportunity for somebody with their sweat equity to finish off those houses. And I think because of the seniority of our state representative, Theodore, we could probably get a grant from the GMA office, the Department of Commerce, who also are interested in getting those houses back on the market.
Same question, Mr. Peach.
Mike and I both interviewed for endorsement by the Port Angeles Realtors Association. I received the endorsement. Let me tell you that I believe there isn't as much of a shortage of affordable housing as there is a shortage of family wage jobs. Think about it, the job, the houses that are on the market today were established by people that had manufacturing jobs. They want and deserve a recovery of their investment. How can you possibly do that if you're on minimum wage? And that's the issue I see is government, we at the county level have the opportunity to promote businesses, to encourage business by saying, this is a business-friendly environment and we push back on regulations that are nonsense and recently pushed back on, couldn't believe, a landscape of coordinates. How much does this cost per individual? I don't know. It's that type of attitude that prevents investment.
Robyn.
I didn't understand how, all the last half the answer related to affordable housing. But again, bankers would like to see this done. The GMA proposes to do infill for houses, so there's state policy to favor this. Planning Department folks and neighborhoods would like to see those houses recovered. And the neighborhood would look far better, their housing values would go up. When I talked to the Realtors, they were, had a lot of questions how this could work. So we had a great discussion. So improving neighborhoods, one house at a time is important. And I think since it's such a big project across the county, if you have affordable housing, we could have to.
Real simple thought for you, other people's money. That's the attitude that you just heard. Let's use tax dollars. I have resisted and opposed tax increases since I got in office. In fact, one year, I actually lowered taxes, I and another member, actually all three of us, lowered taxes. The issue I share with you is central government has parole, but there is a role for private industry. And that's a big difference between Mike and I. I do not support the notion of other people's money.
Okay, thank you. And we have time for one more before we move to closing statements.
My name's Ron Richards. I find this discussion of alternative energy really interesting. Four days ago, the World Bank withdrew funding from the last coal-fired power plant that they have, that they were considering funding. And their reasoning was this, we have made a very firm decision not to go forward with the coal power plant because we are required by our bylaws to go with the lowest-cost option and renewables have now come below the cost of coal. So my question is, shouldn't we get on the bad wagon before it's too late?
And Mr. Peach, you first.
Other people's money will solve that problem, Ron. And that's the approach that was taken to subsidize the cost of electricity in areas that don't have hydroelectric electricity. We have a resource here in the northwest that is extremely important to our economy. And so we should take a look at that as a renewable resource because of its. The other types of resources, I think that in addition to solar, one that we have right here in our backyard deals with wave energy. Now, that's been brought about and delayed for all kinds of reasons. And I'm patient. I'm hoping that those reasons, maybe it's that technology, will create more viability. But between now and then, I am not interested in subsidizing in order to see some objective that someone tells me is good for me.
Well, part of the Bill Gates solution has nothing to do with subsidies. It's private entrepreneurs, billionaires in China, India, Japan, Jeff Bezos, Bill Gates, a handful of others. If you read his, his statement and then looked at Energy Ventures, who's on that board of directors, they see a worldwide crisis, they're going to invest a major portion of their fortune to solve this. And it isn't about just government subsidies. It's a great talking point, but if you were serious on climate change, you would have been there this morning with the PABA. It was a pro and con discussion. The policy, Washington Policy Council spent, sent a person to be the con on the forum. It wasn't just whatever you call it, friends of mine or whatever it was. It was a professional paid to talk about the no side of the initiative. So you heard both sides. And to hear both sides and very favorably come out thinking, gee, you know, I have drilled through Bill Gates and these other folks investing their future. Even the president yesterday said he thinks we've got a problem with climate change.
Thank you. And Robyn.
If you take a hard look at an example of what subsidization will do, if you study what is happening in California and power rates, the implementation of required solar power has created the situation where excess power has to be sold to the other grid? No, they actually pay Nevada to take that power. What in the hell is wrong with that picture? All right? That is the result of other people's money.
All right. Thank you, everyone. So we went over a little bit here, but to end this panel, we'll now move to our candidates' two-minute closing statements. And we will reverse the order from the opening statements, so that means we will begin with Mike Doherty of two minutes.
Again, thanks to the League ladies for putting all this together. And thanks to all of you for coming out on a chilly night. Hopefully you're better informed. I'll stick around afterwards as long as you want. I'll be out here again tomorrow to talk about issues. I think my record, and this summarizes it on this sheet, and I'd invite you to go to the website that's on the little green card out here. It's probably, I don't know, two dozen pages on that website of history, some questions, handle some issues, my experience in affordable housing, the opioid crisis. I sat for a decade on a group called the Criminal Justice Treatment Account Panel, the main body in the state that figures out the policy, the funding distribution, and then monitors the effectiveness of that funding for alcohol, opioids, meth, whatever was the drug of the month. And we met every two months. So I was on a number of those things. In fact, the bottom of this little handout mentions four or five areas where I represented all of the counties in Washington State, again, by the Association of Counties appointing me or three different governors appointed me to different committees. Because they thought I could give a fair shake for urban and rural on many of these important committees. So, you know, broadband, a number of other issues. So again, I think I would be fair on the front of this item and on the back, it talks about how I was trusted by county commissioners around the state to represent their interests on these committees and in meetings with governors, senators, whatever it was. So I think I established trust with my peers and if I was elected, I would do that again. I think my style of being around, listening on Wednesdays particularly, was effective. I was thanked by many, many people for doing that. And over the last four years, people have said, we don't see our county commissioner in Joyce or we don't see him at Palm Bay, like we did you. It was predictable, you'd be here and if I called the courthouse or if I emailed, you would see me at two o'clock on Wednesday afternoon. So again, I would do that and try to establish rapport and trust with the citizens of the third district. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. And Mr. Peach.
Mike's mentioned Bill Gates a couple of times. Let me refer you to a book that he has called Business at the Speed of Trust. Remember what it's like to go through the airport 20 years ago? You know, it took me an hour to get through security at the airport. I can't tell you what it was like to get into the White House, okay? Too bad for the bad guys, they're not going to succeed. My point is that if you'll establish a relationship with the people that you represent, that you serve, that involves real fundamentals of transparency, here is exactly what is occurring and how you can get information. My job is to facilitate that transfer, not to tell you, but to facilitate access to information. And then collaboration. If you take a hard look at the decisions that have been made by our commissioners, we have to talk with each other in a public forum. And you'll see that I've changed my mind on some things through that process of collaboration, through communication. It's the first time the county has dealt with having a Democrat, a Republican, and an Independent. And the feedback that we get from staff is they appreciate the fact that we set an example of collaboration and leadership they haven't seen in a very long time. I just ask you to reflect on the difference in the management styles between Mike and I as you think about the issues that we face in the future. And please remember one thing, I work for you.
All right, thank you both. So let's give a round of applause for these. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Palm County, thank you for appearing here this evening and I hope you remain afterwards to answer any more questions that people have, if this is with the audience a bit. Debbie has kindly offered, please stick around for a little bit, until 8:30. So before we close though, I'd like to invite any candidates who are running for other offices who are in the audience to stand, state your name and the office you are running for. Do we have anybody else here tonight running for office? All right, so in conclusion then, on behalf of the League of Women Voters, I want to thank the candidates for running for office and for appearing here this evening. Thanks to our timers and to you, the audience, for your informed questions. And please remember that ballots will be mailed on Wednesday, October 17th. And your marked ballot must be placed in a drop box or postmarked no later than November 6th. We have drop boxes here at City Hall in Forks and also there's a new one at the library in Palm Bay. So if you're up there, that's another spot. Ballots now have prepaid postage, so voters do not need to apply a stamp. Please remind your family, friends, and neighbors to cast their votes as well. And for those unable to be in our forum, tell them that you can leave on the League's website within a week, so three, three days to a week. And Monday, October 29th is the last day to register a person at Palm County Auditor's Office. So the League does have two more candidate forums coming up tomorrow evening, featuring the District Committee and U.S. House of Representatives District 6. That's happening at Pennsyl College, the Little Theater from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. Then on Thursday, October 18th, from 6:00 to 8:30 PM at the Port Angeles Library Carver Room, District Court 2 and State House Representative for the 24th District, Position 1 and Position 2 will be featured. So those two are coming up and again, that information is on your agenda and also on the League's website. Couple other things I wanted to point out is, you may not be aware that voter turnout at the August primary in Palm County was less than 50% of registered voters. We all have an equal voice, but only if we vote. So I also want to tell you that the League of Women Voters of Washington State has developed a new resource that will help voters make important ballot decisions. Vote411.org is a nonpartisan online voter guide that offers balanced and relevant information on candidates and issues on voters' ballots. All candidates have been encouraged to post their answers to questions on issues facing their local communities. You can pick up Vote411.org bookmarks on the League membership table for further information. And there are a few other little shway-type things if you're interested there as well. Please do visit the membership table and consider, consider joining the organization. Donations are welcome and that's what finances our ability to continue to offer these forums. Oh, and by the way, also on the table, there is some additional information about some of the ballot initiatives that we'll be voting on here. So thank you and we appreciate your coming out to the forum tonight.